I'd like to call the order tonight, Town Council meeting July 8th, 2019 at 8 o'clock. First thing we're going to do is invocation and Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Tiki, can you help us?
Oh Heavenly Father, grant us your guidance as we are gathered here this evening in carrying out our duties to our townspeople and helping to make our town a better place in which to live. Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance to the Father, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Everybody stand for a second. Mr. Swirsky, Bob Swirsky, for those who grew up in Stratford, he ran Bob's Prep Shop, he was very active in Veterans Affairs, he wrote a book on his experience, he was a Jewish person from Bridgeport, and he was one of the original people that went into the Holocaust. So I'd like to have a moment of silence. He passed away at 99 years old about three weeks ago. Thank you. Thanks, please be seated. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of both June 10th and June 24th, 2019.
Second by Mr. O'Brien, motion by Mrs. Dantcho. Is there any discussion on the minutes? If not, we'll call it a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes yes, motion passes. Next thing, I'd like to turn it over to the mayor. She has some things to say.
Thank you, Council Chair. There's commentary from the peanut gallery to my right over here.
Greg, remind you, you have four minutes tonight, you just used 20 seconds.
So, the first thing I'd like to share with you is that Paul and I became grandparents yesterday. And Jonathan Paul was born at 9:08 on 9/7, and weighed nine pounds, eight ounces, on 7/7, excuse me, and weighed nine pounds, eight ounces, and was 21 and 1/2 inches long. And he's healthy and happy, and his mom is a little sore, but she's happy and healthy too. So, as we were waiting to see him and them, my daughter and son-in-law, we also had the pleasure of watching the US Women's Olympic Team win the whole tournament. So, it was nice to see Alyssa Nair from Stratford defend us so well, and it was nice to see the USA win. So that was a great start to this week, to Sunday. Some of the recent events we've had is our high school graduations occurred on June 11th. I attended the Stratford Partnership for Youth and Families Annual Town Hall Meeting, and if you ever think our kids don't have it together, you just go to one of their meetings and listen to how articulate and well-informed they are. They do us proud, as does their advisor, Mrs. Trojanowski, who happens to be sitting in the audience today. Thank you, Tammy. The Airport Master Plan Meeting and Public Hearing was held in Stratford on the 19th at the Birds Eye Municipal Complex. We were fortunate enough to host Make Music Day on the grounds of the Town Hall Green on Friday, June 21st, and there were two performing groups that played. And I understand, unfortunately, I wasn't here, I was in New Jersey, but I understand it was very, very well-received. The Shakespeare Property Task Force met formally to introduce the public abulations on June 25th, and their next meeting is July 9th. The fireworks was July 3rd. Many of you participated, and I saw you attend, and fun was had by all. Good food, good music, good friends. And I'd like to thank the Brotherhood of Electric Workers, number 488, for their continued sponsorship of the event. We had the Route 110 Groundbreaking Ceremony today at Sikorsky. We were joined by President Dan Schultz, there were several state and town officials, Bill and Greg and Jim joined us. And this project will align the Sikorsky South Entrance with Orin Oak Lane. It will eliminate some traffic lights, and hopefully improving traffic flow. The project starts tomorrow and is substantially completed by November. So for any roadwork project, that is quite an accelerated schedule. The final completion will be in January, but just substantial completion by November is pretty impressive. All four lanes will remain open during the duration of the project, except with some overnight constructions where there may be some lane closures. An additional crosswalk and sidewalks will be added for easier and safer pedestrian crossing to the bus stop. Simple Textile Recycling came to Stratford, and the kickoff event was today. Simple Recycling VP Sunny Wilkins and Councilors Connor, O'Brien, and Dantcho joined us for the ribbon-cutting ceremony. So, a little back history, Bill and I were on the Green Task Force well over a year and a half ago. Way Zero had come to present several options for us to consider, and Simple Recycling was one of it. So, Bill and I had been on this track, and with our help from Brian Leclerc, to get this going, so we would have textile recycling in the town. And it's been a labor of love, actually. We had to wait for Simple Recycling to get a depository spot near us in Fairfield County before they could do it. So they have a site in New Britain, and New Britain's been doing this for well over a year. And so they opened up their depository in Stamford, and so we're off to the races, us, Milford, and Orange, our nearest neighbors who are doing this. So this service is free to residents in the town. It will reduce the waste in our disposal stream and increase the recycling stream for Stratford. It's an environmentally conscious effort, and it is not to displace giving clothing or used items to Goodwill, or Salvation Army, or any other depository. What this is, is to take textiles out of the garbage stream, and what that means is, old sneakers or ripped clothing that you would not give to another party to reuse or resell can be helpful to the town that we're not paying $63 in tipping fees, and we are actually receiving $20 a ton for these items. Upcoming events, we have our summer concert series at the Green every Tuesday, this coming Tuesday, as in tomorrow. We also have the Bud Underwood Gazebo Dedication at 6:30 at Paradise Green. I mentioned the Shakespeare Task Force is also tomorrow, tomorrow's a busy day, at 7 o'clock here. And then Blues on the Beach is July 20th. Couple things to report on, Karen Doyle is welcome to the Economic and Community Development Office as a part-time coordinator. We wish Tino Beto farewell as our Conservation Administrator, and we welcome Kelly Kerrigan, who will be starting with us on August 6th. We are pleased to announce that the South Western Connecticut Agency on Aging and Independent Living, by a vote of their Board of Directors, awarded Older Americans Title III Funds Grant to the Senior Services of Stratford in the amount of $17,344 for the Senior Outreach Coordinator. I want to congratulate Sandy and her staff for this. Stratford was also awarded a Historic Preservation Grant of $7,500 for improving preservation and management of local government records, and my thanks goes to Susan Pollak for this. I've offered three senior public safety employees, Brian Lampart, John Popick, and Joe McNeil, a retirement investment plan incorporated into their fire pension and Plan A pension. This will be at no cost to the town, and requires them to stay for a minimum of three years with us. During the week of July 15th, EPA and its contractor, Reston, will be sampling groundwater monitoring wells as part of the Raymark Industries Superfund Site. This is a routine sampling event that occurs approximately every five years. The sample wells are located in Stratford Square Shopping Center, which is Home Depot, ShopRite, and Walmart, to Husatonic Avenue, and approximately from Willow Ave to Orange Orchard Street. This is a very experienced sample crews who will perform this work on secondary roads, and none of it is on private property. Anybody have any questions?
Thank you, Mayor. Any questions for you? You have the floor.
Thank you, Council Chair. Mayor, can you offer a little more explanation on...
Thank you, Dave.
The guaranteed pension plan that was going to be offered to the three, and are there... Why is it no cost to the town? That's good. And has it been used elsewhere to retain individuals? So, please. Chris?
Essentially, the drop plan would allow the employees to keep working, but their pension benefit is frozen at the level, we say it's their drop date. So for these individuals, they won't accrue any more time into the pension, and that amount of money then goes into an interest-bearing account. It stays within the pension, which is why it doesn't cost us anything. At the end of the drop period, say three years, or we can mutually agree to extend it for four or five years, they then receive that money. So essentially, it's like, I look at it as basically putting the money in escrow, and it earns interest during that period of time, or call it like a 401, just it's going into like a separate investment account to earn interest. So they're not accruing additional time or benefits.
Is the pension that would otherwise be paid to them directly if they were to retire, that's what's put into the escrow, and then they'll get the lump sum when they re...
Yes.
Thank you.
Exactly.
Any other questions, Mr.? Any other questions for the mayor? If not, we'll move to Mr. Pia.
Yep. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to make a motion to approve 4.3.1. The Tax Partnership Screening Committee held a meeting on June 13th, 2019, referred... I'd like to make a motion to approve 4.3.1.1, excuse me, for the referral of Ursat Biddle's Sydney Street Project, as noted in the agenda.
Motion seconded by Mrs. Dantcho. Is there any discussion?
The only item I'll just add to the discussion, because as being the chair for this committee, I have been since we were sworn in, and I was on the committee for a year and a half prior to being on the council. This approval is still operating under the old tax abatement, tax incentive program, of which later on in the agenda, the committee's been working very, very hard to revise and bring up the current standards. So that is the law today, as that's the ordinance today, this is approved upon the old one. Just want to make that note.
Are there any other questions? If not, we'll call to...
Chair, I apologize.
Yep, go ahead.
I thought you were just going to look at me and see my hand.
Oh, I'm sorry. I owe you apology.
Through the chair, a question to Chris. There's a sentence, "shall extend 24 months from sitting council approval of removal of cell tower." So, when would it otherwise become effective?
So, and I'll ask, Attorney Leclerc is our committee attorney, sits in on all the meetings for this too. Brian, just help me if I'm... The cell tower, they're waiting on approval from State DOT for the... For the billboard. Siding Council, excuse me. Thank you. They're waiting on approval from Siding Council for the billboard to get that approved, and that's where the cell tower, we felt it. Ursat Biddle's a great community partner, they have a great project, they've done, it already looks amazing, that Sydney Street property already, parcel. So we worked with them to basically extend, if we needed to, depending on the Siding Council approval, for that cell tower.
You're extending the commencement date of those rebates, because...
Correct, because it's 18 months.
Construction must commence within the 24 months.
Yes.
Because they can't until they have the Siding Council approval. It may push them up against the 24 months. This way they get the rebate, but only once that construction is substantially completed.
Right.
And then, you know, instead of doing it within 24 months, it could be a little bit longer because of the Siding Council approval, which takes some time.
Anything else? If not, no one else, we'll call this to a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes yes, motion passes 10-0. 4.3.2.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve item 4.3.2, A, B, and C.
Seconded by Mr. Tiki. Is there any discussion on these? Yes, but of course. In the future,
we're going to put a place on the thing just for councilmen can speak freely.
I appreciate everyone's preparedness and questions. For these three items, if you could be further directed to Allen or to the state senate. Thank you, Kent. Are these three items part of what I'll call the original approved budget for the high school? Are these coming out of a contingency, or are these new?
Mr. Lullen, can you step up to the mic, please? Thank you.
Sure, no problem. Good evening, Chairman Connor, council members. So yeah, these are actually being expended from the contingency funds, which are within the agreed-upon GMP. RFI 399, the operable partition steel, there were some small allowance numbers that were originally included in Turner's hard costs that were bought out with the subcontractors, but there was kind of gray areas, and so through the RFI process, the scope got more defined, pieces got added in. But this is for the operable partition, that's going to, I believe, separate the gym, so it's a little bit involved in that you have a high space, a very expansive ceiling area. So it got a little more costly than even Turner initially thought. Touching base quickly on the field item, for $538,000, that's just to turf what would be the field. Included in the GMP is a number that's almost double that amount, and the reason for that is, we wanted the GMP amount that was in there as the ad alternate to include sidewalk, fencing, lighting, potentially a backstop. So there's more cost loaded into that line item in the GMP than just what Turner had priced as a change order. And on the HP Minis, that's the final cost for those computers. I just don't want anybody to get concerned that an HP computer costs $1,000. That's the final cost to have it to its working location through Board of Ed with the software ready to go.
One question.
Yep.
Sorry for not following the project more closely, Allen. So the base project, if I can use that term, had roughly $2 million for field improvements such as lighting and sidewalks, and this is an additional...
No, this is included as part of it. So what kind of happened, when we were putting the programming of the whole project together, is Rich Snedeker, who was with Crack, had a fairly extensive conversation with me, specific to properly kind of cost allocating and budgeting for turning the athletic field into what we would consider as a town, a full functioning, usable field. So that's why there's monies included in there for the sidewalks, for lighting, for fencing, even potentially a backstop, because at one point there was talk about extending it into a softball, baseball field, if we could have acquired enough square footage for it. So if you go into the GMP book, the actual cost for the field, turf field, is I believe 1.1 million. And out of that money, Turner budgeted an ad alternate of $538,000, but that's just to take what would be the grass field and make it synthetic turf.
Thank you, Allen.
Any other questions?
Any other questions while we have Allen up here? If, yep, go ahead, Wally.
Thank you very much. Good to see you. Good work, all the time you've been working on it. I'm aware of it because we work together. The turf, the new turf that they're putting down, is it cost efficient to have that instead of grass?
Definitely. The other thing, enhancement to it, is it would be curriculum-based and cover like complete sports. It would be lined for multiple. So it wouldn't be like just a lacrosse field, or just a football field, or just a soccer field. They'd multi-color the lines, set them into the turf, and they say the first kind of like two or three years, once you get kind of the crumb surface to settle in, they're virtually maintenance-free. And so I think that's probably a better option to us than having to maintain natural grass fields. I don't know how many of the fields you've seen, but I think in our town, some areas work better than others with the natural grass fields.
And just to continue on that, being on the Park and Rec Committee for so many years, a lot of times to redo those fields or to replace those low-maintenance fields costs a lot of money to redo it if it was damaged, correct?
It can. What's interesting with going to synthetic turf fields, and we have, I believe Antonasi is going to start looking into this, because of sort of concerns over environmental and exposure, and using recycled rubber tires, which may or may not be a good option to have kids play on top of them. To my knowledge, right now, there is no sort of set ed spec at Hartford for what consists of a synthetic field. They're in a little bit of like a kind of gray area right now in between figuring out what can actually be used. So, in terms of, without knowing what the material is, it's very hard to kind of guess and figure what the maintenance needs or costs would be.
Well, you know, I know some of those meetings, speaking with Chad, to replace some of those things is such a high, high cost factor. I understand that we're saving money on this, which is good. It is a multi-field, which is necessary, because there's a lot of sports in this town, and I love that about our town. So I just want to make sure, that's why I'm asking the question, like, over the years, like, how much run we're going to get out of it? Is it worth the cost of change?
So, we'll be tracking that. The important thing with this, and the reason why Turner wanted to kind of get us going on this now, is ideally, they'd like to be putting this field down next summer, so that when quote-unquote "everything is ready" and they open school in the fall of 2020, that the turf field is ready to go for the physical education program.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, I'd just add in what Allen was saying, that having a turf field also makes it more usable for the daily physical education classes. That if, you know, if it rained the night before, if it was a grass field, it would just be mud, and the kids wouldn't be able to go outside for PE. This way you have a turf field, and they can go out there, you know, as long as it's not raining or snowing, that turf field's available all the time during the day for the PE classes, and then at night for the town youth sports. Is that correct, Mr. Lullen?
Yeah, that's correct, Councilman Poisson.
Excuse me. Good thing you brought that up. Thank you very much. In terms of the rain off, because I know the drain off, it's, when it rains, it's a little more, it's better for that field, because I used to also rep football, and when you have those turfs, I think it drains off better than the regular field, so it's a plus in that respect as well, right?
Exactly. Yep.
Okay, I'm going to call this to a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes yes, motion passes 10-0. Mrs. Dantcho.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. On 4.3.3.1, I motion to approve an ordinance amending section 60-2 of the Town Code, and that the second reading of the above entitled ordinance be dispensed with, as copies have been received by all council members, and that the same be adopted as a second reading, and the foregoing is and hereby approved 30 days from passage.
Seconded by Mr. Pia. Is there any discussion on these? If not, I'll call, it's going to be a roll-call vote. All of these will be roll-call vote. Start, Mr. Pia.
Aye.
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 Chair votes yes, motion passes 10-0.
Mr. Chairman, I would also like to motion to approve an ordinance amending section 5-52 and 5-53 of the Town Code.
There's a motion.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Mr. Pia. Is there any discussion? Yes.
Just for the public, this is a, the one we prior approved was related to Longborough Commission, and this is related to the Arts Commission. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Gann. If not, we'll begin roll-call vote with, if there's no further discussion, Mrs. Dantcho.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes yes, motion passes 10-0.
Mr. Chairman, I motion to approve an ordinance amending section 5-39 of the Town Code.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Mr. Pia. Is there any discussion? Call and no discussion, we'll call it a roll-call vote. Mr. Pia?
Aye.
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 Chair votes yes, motion passes 10-0.
And again, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to motion to approve an ordinance amending section 5-69 of the Town Code.
Second that.
Seconded by Mr. Pia, motion by Mrs. Dantcho. Is there any discussion on these? If not, we'll go roll-call. Oh, sorry.
Just for the public to note that this is related to the Short Beach Commission.
Yes, it is.
Yes, it is. Aye. I'm waiting for people to talk. Okay, start them again. Mrs. Dantcho.
Aye.
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 Chair votes yes, motion passes 10-0.
And again, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve an ordinance amending section 5-91 and 5-92 of the Town Code, and this is regarding the Veterans Monument Preservation Commission for Academy Hill.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. O'Brien. Is there any discussion? If not, we'll call it a vote. Start with Mr. Pia.
Aye.
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 Chair votes yes, motion passes 10-0. Now, the Town Attorney's Report, do we have anything?
I have no report.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve 6.1.1, as stated in the agenda.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Dantcho, motion by Mr. Pia. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chair, if I could just point out, I just want to, I want to thank, so the public knows, I want to thank this committee for working on this. Since we were sworn in in roughly January of 18, the committee's been working on this for a year and a half. It's a very outdated ordinance that needed a lot of time and work on, and I want to thank Attorney Leclerc for giving the legalese and the grammatical corrections that we've brought in. Also, the current tax assessor, Donna, Ms. Adloski, who's been invaluable recently. So, it's a lot of work, it's an excellent document that's going to go to ordinance. I just wanted to thank the committee, Mr. Purlo, Councilman Purlo, Councilwoman Dantcho, Randy Vidal, and John Dovis.
Is there any further comments? If not, again, we'll call a roll-call vote. Mrs. Dantcho.
Did you have a second?
Yeah, it was...
The ordinance?
No. Yes, sure.
Well, the attachment posted on the council website along with the... Meeting agenda?
With the ordinance?
It's a new ordinance.
It's a new ordinance?
We're sending it to ordinance.
Will the language of the ordinance be posted to the Town Council meeting? Will the public be able to read this online?
Yes, on the council agenda, yes.
Yes, they're going to go to ordinance and back to council.
It will. Thank you so much.
Okay. No further discussion, we'll call it a vote. We don't need a roll-call vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes yes, motion passes 10-0. 6.2.1.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to accept resolution regarding youth service bureau grant. The town of Stratford's been awarded grant by the Connecticut Department of Children and Families for the Youth Service Bureau, in the amount not to exceed $34,668.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Kadim. Is there any discussion? If not, we'll call it a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes yes, motion passes 10-0. 6.2.2.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the resolution for 6.2.2.
Motion seconded by Mr. Kadim. Is there any discussion? If not, we'll call it a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes yes, motion passes 10-0. New business appropriations. Mr. Pia?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, yes, Mr. Chair, thank you. I'd like to make a motion to approve 7.1.1, an appropriation from unanticipated expense, reference number 201901.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Tiki. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, if I may just note, these are for fiscal year 19, the year that just ended, June 30, 2019.
So noted. Mr. Gann?
Thank you, Chair. Through the chair, we can, for fiscal year 19, though it's ended on June 30th, we can still transfer funds from that fiscal year?
Correct.
And a general question, in regards to eviction services, do we not usually, how do you say, get that money back through maybe liens or fees?
Greg, I don't think so. I believe the eviction services they're referring to is the use of the town vehicle to take the person's belongings after it's been put on the curb and to store for a certain period. If they redeem their belongings, we get a... If they, if they get it, if they redeem their belongings, we get it back. But I'm not sure that happens all the time, so I can't, I don't, I can't tell you that it's a, that we recoup 100%.
Okay, any other questions? If not, we'll call this to vote. All, all in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes yes, motion passes 10-0. 7.1.2.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve 7.1.2, an appropriation from unanticipated expense, reference number 201903.
Second.
Second by Mr. Tiki. Motion by Mr. Pia. Is there any discussion? If not, we'll call to a vote. You do have a question.
Did the fiscal year 19 budget include funds for public works uniforms? And this is in addition to?
Yes, it's, it's, Mr. Timniak, can you come forward for a second? I believe uniforms are covered in the contract.
Yes, uniforms were included and in this case, they went over.
We tried to make an attempt, the fire, police and highway had their separate budgets and it was, they were located all into those budgets. In an effort to consolidate that for control and cost, cost purposes, we consolidated everything and we came up with a shortfall around $45,000. In the past, the department was able to move funds around to cover it, but now since it's centralized, we don't have that ability. So we need these extra funds to pay for those uniforms to bring it up to date.
Would these come out of contingency fund?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Chair?
Mm-hmm.
The unanticipated expense in budget, is that labeled as contingency?
Yes, it is. It's for any, anything not in, wasn't anticipated at time of budget. Okay? What we're doing is taking it from that line item and bringing it into uniforms. So going forward, we have a, we have a good estimate and a good budget.
Thank you.
Mr. Kadim?
Thank you, thank you to the chair. Normally, each department pays for their own uniforms. That's the normal process, yes?
In the, in the past, that was true, okay? For, the reason why you want to centralize that is for control purposes. So you know exactly what your uniform costs are and you can budget accordingly. If it's broken up, Wally, what happens here is the fact that they have the, the right to move funds to cover it, okay? So you don't have a true cost. You don't, you don't, for accounting purposes, the best way is to consolidate that.
Do you anticipate going forward that it should stay this way? Like you said, it's more efficient?
Well, outside of the normal increase in, in laundry and, and uniform costs.
So the budget would have to change when they're hiding their individual budgets for each department. They would have to change that, right?
Yes, I, I expect this to be a one-time, one-time charge to bring it up to where, to where it should be.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? If not, we'll call to vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes yes, motion passes 10-0. 7.1.3.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve 7.1.3, appropriation from unanticipated expense, reference number 201904.
Second by Mr. Tiki. Is there any discussion on this? If, if not, we'll call to vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes yes, motion passes 10-0. Going all the way down to 7.2.6, is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that George Graham of Beaver Dam Road be and is hereby appoint, reappointed a member of the Stratford Housing Authority with a